Festerson.
Here.
Gurnat.
Here.
Jerem.
Here.
Milton.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Can we all stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for invocation by Councilmember Gary Gurnat?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to the end of this world.
Lord, as troubled waters lie ahead, bless those in authority with true and realistic wisdom as we continue our earthly work. And also be with and guide the medical staff as our Assistant City Clerk Sandra Moses undergoes surgery tomorrow. We ask this in the name of the United States. Amen.
City Clerk's certified publication on Daily Record, the official newspaper, on June 12th, known as our pre-council and regular city council meeting June 16th, 2015. A current copy of the Meetings Act is posted in white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
This Omaha City Council meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic devices. Mr. Clerk.
Ordinance on final rating and planning board attachments, item number five. Ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use development agreement for West Dodge Station to allow automotive sales at 18451 California Street, providing site development standards. A, Planning Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Item number five is up for public hearing today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, already driven 11440 West Centerville, appearing on behalf of the applicant, simply here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents here today? Any opponents here today on item number five? Public hearing is closed. Roll call, no lights. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Five is passed, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, Agenda Items Number Six through Eleven shall be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, Agenda Items Number Twelve through Fifteen shall be laid over for two weeks. Item Number Sixteen is Resolution of Plymouth Platinum Indian Point, located northeast 192nd and Sailor Streets, along with attached conditions, is hereby accepted and preparation of final plat is hereby authorized. A, Planning Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Item Sixteen is up for public hearing today. Proponents, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Omaha City Council. My name is Jim Lang. I'm the attorney for the applicant Frank Crecci. This is the second phase of Indian Point, which you previously approved. We're here to answer any questions for you that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, no lights. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Sixteen is adopted, seven to zero. Item Number Seventeen, Resolution of the Revised Plymouth Platinum Indian Point, located southeast of 192nd and West Maple Road, along with attached conditions, hereby accepted and preparation of final plat is hereby authorized. A, Planning Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Item Number Seventeen, public hearing today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents, please. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Seventeen is adopted, seven to zero. Item Number Eighteen, Resolution of the Revised Plymouth Platinum Indian Point, located northwest of 204th Street and Grand Avenue, along with attached conditions, hereby accepted and preparation of final plat is hereby authorized. A, Planning Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number Eighteen is today. Proponents, please. Okay, seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
No lights, roll call, Mr. Clerk. Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Eighteen is adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, Agenda Items Number Nineteen through Twenty shall be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Liquor, item Number Twenty-One, Nebraska Entertainment Incorporated, request permission to appoint Lisa Friday, manager of their locations at 13404 West Maple Road, 3201 Farnham Street, and 304 North 174th Street.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number Twenty-One is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, I'm Lisa Friday. I'm here to apply to change the manager liquor application.
If we can get your address, too, please.
It's 18101 North First Street, Davie, Nebraska, 68336.
Thank you. Any other proponents, please? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Moved and seconded, no lights. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-One is approved, seven to zero. Thank you. Item Number Twenty-Two, The Burlington League, 1002 South 10th Street, Class I Liquor License, new application, new location. There's communications from permits inspection saying if you wish to grant this application, you'd grant it contingent on they're getting the proper permits.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number Twenty-Two is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific. This is a proposed new bar and restaurant down in the Burlington Building, which has been rehabbed, which is, I think, a really nice addition. The owner and operator, Jamie Pogue, is here with me. If you have any questions, wave, Jamie. And I guess for that, we're here for questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any other proponents, please? Seeing none, are there any opponents, please?
It's been moved and seconded, no lights.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Jerem passed second time for potential conflict of interest. Twenty-Two is approved, six zero one passing. Item Number Twenty-Three, DJ's Jugout at 636 North 114th Street, request permission for a change of location of the present Class C liquor license to 777 North 114th Street.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number Twenty-Three is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, Greg Pivovar, 2312 Cornhusker Bellevue, Nebraska, appearing with Darwin Hanson, who is the owner of DJ's Jugout. This is just a move across the street out on 114th from the present location to the old Clancy location out there. And it totally renovated the building out there. And if there's any other questions, we'll field them.
Thank you. Any other proponents, please? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Hold on.
Councilmember Milton.
No, I just wanted to say thank you. So you're moving across the street from your current location to the Clancy's location? When do you, and how, when do you think you'll be able to open?
We're anticipating middle of August.
And that's a much bigger space, so that should work out.
A little bit bigger, yeah, than what I have.
It'll work out better in the layout?
Yeah, well, we're doing a completely new layout, just similar to my other locations that I had.
Well, I want to thank you for doing that. When I saw it, I was very disappointed to see Clancy's closing down. But I obviously come down and go to your location on a number of occasions. But I'm glad to see something going in at the end of that, at that strip mall. And I think DJ's Jugout would be just a great location and great restaurant to have right there. So, thank you very much. And with that off.
For the record, can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Darwin Hanson, 1904 Old Gaelic Circle, Bellevue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll second Councilman Thompson's motion to approve.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are you going to keep the stage?
Pardon?
Are you going to keep the stage? Were you brought in live bands before?
No, we're not having any live.
You're going to get rid of that?
Yeah. I'm out of the music business.
Okay. Well, I guess the food is still good, so I'll come. But I'm going to miss the music. I support it.
We'll think about it to yourself.
It's been moved and seconded, no further lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-three is adopted, seven to zero. We didn't read up twenty-four. We should have read up twenty-four with the twenty-four is Big Red is granted approval to operate a satellite at DJ's Jugout at 777 North 114th Street.
Well, since we're coming up on it now, item twenty-four is public hearing today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Katrina Coffey. I'm Vice President of Marketing for Big Red Keno. We're located at 11248 John Call Boulevard. I have with me Darwin, and we're here to ask for the Keno application to be moved, as you heard on the liquor across the street.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents for item twenty-four today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
It's been moved and seconded, no lights.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-four is adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item Number Twenty-Five, Down Under Lounge at 3806 Leavenworth Street, request permission for a change of location of the present Class C liquor license to 3530 Leavenworth Street.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number Twenty-Five is today. Roll, any proponents, please?
John Dozel, 1109 Door 49th Street, owner and operator.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Oh, there is one right here.
Opponent?
Opponent, yes.
Okay, we can get you to, we'll have you all stand by, or you can sit in the front row if you like.
She lives right there.
Thank you.
My name is Beth Machel.
Move over to the mic.
Move over to the microphone, please.
There you go.
My name is Beth Machel. I live in the home that's just to the north of the, of the location. My concerns are, there's very limited parking for this facility. Most, when it was a side door lounge, patrons parked all over the neighborhood. We, I was constantly picking up cigarette butts, beer bottles, at 2:00 AM when the bar closes. And this is a residential neighborhood, it's not a commercial neighborhood. At 2:00 AM when the bar closes, we were constantly being awoken by patrons walking to their car very loud. They're also advertising a live music stage. It's against a very small building, minimal soundproofing. The prior bar, they had the door open so that patrons on the patio could hear, well, so can the rest of us in the neighborhood hear their music. Again, this is a neighborhood that we're trying to bring up. It's, you know, just a few blocks south of Midtown Crossing. I don't believe that we need another bar. And certainly, this, this location is not built, it's not, it's not a good location for a bar, and it affects those of us who live in the neighborhood adversely.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, if I could have the applicant come back up.
Yes. Can I address some of the things you mentioned?
Yeah, I was going to ask you some questions.
I do have answers for all that. I have secured additional parking with the owner of the building, a family dollar, so we will have additional parking for the facility. The facility has state-of-the-art soundproofing. I don't, I did not bring photos with me, but I do have them in my phone. The building is soundproofed, ceiling, soundproofed walls. So there is soundproofing and actually state-of-the-art soundproofing that was installed.
Let me ask you this, though. The, the door on the west side, when it was the side door, was propped open from time to time, and it is a fire door, so it shouldn't be propped open.
The west side is actually an entrance to the patio.
Right. But the door had been propped open from time to time. And, and I'd like you to accept my representation on that, because I've been there when it was the side door, when Mr. Jam Rosie owned it, when the door was propped open. So, I, I think, if you're going to make this successful transition, you're need to, going to, need to demonstrate that you can be a good neighbor. So, I'd like to have your assurance that the side door to the west patio for the Beer Garden will not be propped open.
I have no problem with that, sir. I've been, you know, we've been operating at the, the present location, and we've had no issues with sound complaints. We've been doing music in, in the, the location. We haven't had any sound complaints. We've done very well with the, the sings from the state troopers. I have no issue with the, the door being kept closed. To me, it doesn't make sense why they were doing it, especially with what type of heating and ventilation it is. It's kind of negative progress to have that door open.
Good. Now, what are you going to do in terms of being a good neighbor in patrolling, so to speak, after hours for trash, for hangover customers, for the open container, not inside the premises, but in the immediate outdoor related areas?
Well, I'll continue to be the same neighbor I've been at the same location that I have been, where, you know, we, we've changed ownership and the landlord has stopped taking care of the building. I've actually picked up the bottles and picked up the lot and kept the lot clean since November.
Good.
I've joined the Midtown Business Association, so we're a good standing member of the Midtown Business Association and have been since we actually opened the bar. I have other options and ideas that if we do well with the, the music for additional ideas for parking, so, not going to rest on the laurels of the one option, I do have some other ideas and options available, I believe.
Now, where your new location will be is the Leavenworth Neighborhood Association. The former president of that association, who's still very active in the association, Jim Thompson, lives on 35th Avenue, just across the street and up a hill a little bit. So, he's eyes and ears on the ground.
Right, very true.
But in terms of having a dialogue with neighbors like this nice lady who came here today, one way to do that would be to be a member of that neighborhood association, so you can find out what's going on, they'll have your email address, they'll have your phone number, and then things can get resolved between neighbors rather than have them involve us. Because if they involve us, and we have to bring you into the liquor committee or back of this counselor, a counsel for not being a good neighbor, then we have problems. So, you know.
I can actually address that, sir. I've actually communicated with him, Mr. Thompson, since I've actually had the Down Under Lounge. We've had articles in the, the Leavenworth paper. At where I'm located now, I was not allowed to be a member of the association because 36th Street is the boundary for the association. So when I did sign the lease, and before it was actually in the paper, I personally called Mr. Thompson and told him, "We're moving down, we're moving down to the side door." And he was, and he's been a patron of mine currently and was very excited with the move.
All right.
So, not a, I actually was planning on talking to him about moving the meeting sites for the Leavenworth Association to the, to the, to the, the new Down Under.
You may want to ask the VFW if that would offend them if you did that, because they've hosted it for so long, but.
Very true. There's other options for moving around the whole neighborhood.
The bottom line of what I'm trying to say here today is that you are a responsible operator, but to your new neighbor, who's obviously nervous about what's going to happen immediately south of her house, you can understand why her, in terms of having young family and, and making sure that her neighborhood continues on the upswing, why she might have these concerns. So, I'm going to support your application today, but also let you know that if, if I get complaints, I won't hesitate to bring you back down to explain those. And maybe after we vote on this today, you can exchange information in the hallway, so you, you two can dialogue in terms of any concerns that might arise once you get open. Okay?
Sure, no problem.
So I would make a motion to approve.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, no further lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Sixteen is adopted, seven to zero. Item Number Twenty-Six, American GI Forum, Omaha Chapter, 2002 N Street, request permission to appoint Joseph Ramos, manager.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number Twenty-Six is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Jose Ramos, 1111 Kingston Avenue, Bellevue, Nebraska, and I'm looking for approval of the liquor license for the American GI Forum. I have letters of recommendation by the American GI Forum and headquarters in Washington, DC, and also from the State Board, from Mr. Anthony Ray, for approval of this liquor license. Anybody have any questions, or?
We'll, we'll reserve them for a little bit later after we've heard from all the proponents and opponents. Are there any other proponents to be heard?
My name is Mary Martinez. I am the current national, excuse me, state chairman for the state of Nebraska. I'm on the National Board of Directors, and I'm also on the advisory board of the American GI Forum. The American GI Forum is in a situation right now that we are looking for you to allow the American GI Forum members to run their organization by their constitution. We're having difficulties right now because we do have non-members, non-veterans, that have a hold on the organization. We're not a taco house, but everybody knows American GI Forum on N Street as a taco house. And that's good. That brings in revenue, but that's not our purpose, that's not our goal. We're here to service veterans, we're here to service the community, and we're here to service the youth. But when you're concentrating on what's coming in money, and nobody is giving a report, you're asking for a financial report, you're not getting it, you're asking for any kind of credibility, accountability, and you're told no. I have veterans seventeen, eighty, ninety years old that already fought one war. They don't need to fight this war. This is their building, this is their organization, and they should be allowed to run it by the guidelines of the American GI Forum and with the support of the National Commander and the state organization.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Yes, my name, my name is John Bariantos Jr. I am the Secretary of the State Organization and also an appointed Secretary of the American GI Forum Local Chapter, Omaha Chapter. And what I'd like to bring to fruition here is, we have a letter which came to us from the American GI Forum Executive Board, naming the recognized Omaha Chapter, which is, in essence, all these members here are members of the Omaha Chapter. These gentlemen over here are not. They are not recognized by the national. They're not recognized by the state, excuse me, except for one gentleman, Paul Marquez. We are trying to keep this organization together for the veterans. Veterans are the community, so we're doing the community overall, we're including the veterans as the community. And all we hear about is the community, the community. Well, this organization was formed for the purpose of primarily taking care of, of the Hispanic veterans. Since then, it's become, it has become veterans altogether, and we'd like to keep it that way. We would like them, the local organization, to follow the laws and constitution of the state and the national. They have been in violation of many of the constitutions of the national. And their constitution itself is lacking an awful lot of information that's in the state, in the state and the national. And we would like to revise and, and reorganize that, or that constitution so that it does follow the guidelines of the national. Presently, the building and the properties, the assets, and the liabilities they have, but they all reverted to the state when the local chapter folded under by virtue of not paying their charter. Also, they didn't pay their membership fees, which inadvertently meant that they had no members. And since then, we have rechartered the American GI Forum Omaha Chapter through the state. We have also accepted approximately 25 new members, which are recognized by the, by the state and by the national. And presently, Mr. Laura has been, he has been named as the new manager for the liquor license, and we'd like to keep it, he was pending, we'd like to make it permanent, since we hold, we are the only ones that hold a liquor license right now. The liquor, they are operating under a license that we hold. We haven't done anything about it because we want to keep the business going. But we would like you guys to, you gentlemen and ladies, to consider having Mr. Laura as manager on that liquor license.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Okay, seeing none, any opponents?
Oops.
Your proponent?
Proponent.
Opponent, okay.
I mean, Mr. Ramos.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, I meant Mr. Ramos, not Mr. Laura. I named Mr. Laura, but it's Mr. Ramos.
I'm James Grant, and I'm the attorney that represents GI Forum's corporation. And the, as you can tell from many of the comments that you've heard from the proponents on this, that most of the deal that they have to talk about has nothing to do with appointing a manager. I provided documentation to the council prior to appearing today, including the amended articles in the corporation changing the name of the corporation from American GI Forum Omaha Chapter to GI Forum, and in those articles, disassociating with the national. In addition to that, there's all of the rest of the information. It is true that there's a National Commander that wrote a letter to the liquor commission and named certain persons as being officers of the corporation that holds the liquor license, but simply not. The application that was done for appointment of a manager was all done without any corporate authority whatsoever. The, the proponents on this today don't have any authority to do business in Nebraska and have no authority to do business under the name GI Forum or American GI Forum in Nebraska. They're not incorporated. It's simply a social club, and there is a national organization that recognizes them. Nevertheless, the license belongs to the corporation, as does the property, and we test that, that this might not be held in this forum, that if there's something to be done with this, we'll take care of it with the liquor commission and within the courts. I provided you with restraining orders, including Ms. Martinez and other members of the board of the alleged organization. And in light of that, I'd ask that the matter be laid over. There are approximately 20 other opponents that are here.
Maybe they could raise their hand.
The parties opposing, raise your hands, please.
Okay.
These gentlemen over here are not. They are not recognized by the National, they're not recognized by the State, excuse me, except for one gentleman, Paul Marquez. We are trying to keep this organization together for the veterans. Veterans are the community, so we're doing the community overall, we're including the veterans as the community. And all we hear about is the community, the community. Well, this organization was formed for the purpose of primarily taking care of, of the Hispanic veterans, since then it's become, it has become veterans altogether, and we'd like to keep it that way. We would like them, the local organization, to follow the laws and constitution of the State and the National. They have been in violation of many of the constitutions of the National, and their constitution itself is lacking an awful lot of information that's in the State, in the State and the National. And we would like to revise and, and reorganize that, or that constitution, so that it does follow the guidelines of the National. Presently, the building and the properties, the assets, and the liabilities they have, but they all reverted to the State when the local chapter folded under by virtue of not paying their charter. Also, they didn't pay their membership fees, which inadvertently meant that they had no members. And since then, we have re-chartered the American G.I. Forum Omaha Chapter through the State. We have also accepted approximately twenty-five new members, which are recognized by the, by the State and by the National. And presently, Mr. Laura has been, he has been named as the new manager for the liquor license, and we'd like to keep it, he was pending, we'd like to make it permanent, since we hold, we are the only ones that hold a liquor license right now, the liquor, they are operating on, under a license that we hold. We haven't done anything about it because we want to keep the business going. But we would like you guys to, you gentlemen and ladies, to consider having Mr. Laura as manager on that liquor license. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents?
Oops.
You're a proponent?
Proponent.
Opponent, okay.
I mean, Mr. Ramos.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, I meant Mr. Ramos, not Mr. Laura, I named Mr. Laura, but it's Mr. Ramos.
Thanks. I'm James Grant, and I'm the attorney that represents G.I. Forum's corporation. And the, as you can tell from many of the comments that you've heard from the proponents, that most of the deal that they have to talk about has nothing to do with appointing a manager. I provided documentation to the council prior to appearing today, including the amended articles of incorporation, changing the name of the corporation from American G.I. Forum Omaha Chapter to G.I. Forum, and in those articles, disassociating with the National. In addition to that, there's all of the rest of the information. It is true that there's a National Commander that wrote a letter to the Liquor Commission and named certain persons as being officers of the corporation that holds the liquor license, they're simply not. The application that was done for appointment of a manager was all done without any corporate authority whatsoever. The, the proponents in this today don't have any authority to do business in Nebraska, and have no authority to do business under the name G.I. Forum or American G.I. Forum in Nebraska, they're not incorporated, it's simply a social club, and there is a national organization that recognizes them. Nevertheless, the license belongs to the corporation, as does the property, and we'd ask that, that this might not be held in this forum, that if there's something to be done with this, we'll take care of it with the Liquor Commission and within the courts. I provided you with restraining orders, including Ms. Martinez and other members of the Board of the alleged organization. And in light of that, I'd ask that the matter be laid over. There are approximately twenty other opponents that are here.
If you could raise your hand.
The parties opposing, raise your hands, please.
Okay. Anything else? No, thank you. Are there any more, any other opponents who wish to be heard? Go ahead.
Good afternoon, my name is Margot Juarez, and my address is fifty-five eighty-four Shirley Street. My father, Louis Juarez, whose mail I receive on behalf of the G.I. Forum. I'm very confused about procedures that are going on here with this other group to my right. My father is a lifetime member, and I've never received any mail that there's been any issue with his membership to the G.I. Forum. I personally, in the past, in high school, received a scholarship from the Forum for purposes of going to college, whose faces I recognize to the left of me. I am now retired, so that should be an indication to you of the longevity of the organization and the good that they do in the community, besides providing scholarships to the youth. They, I have taken my father to this organization to have meals there, they have had nurses available at times to help with blood pressure, they have a dinner for senior citizens during Christmas time, so it just irritates me that there's just this reference to a taco house, which obviously, there is much more that they do for the community besides providing food. And I would just want to definitely show my support to them, and if this organ, this group here wants to say that my father is not a member, I would like them to inform us. When are they going to inform us of that issue? And I think that they should make it clear to everyone, not to just a closed group, and whoever they have as their members, what's going on. Very irritating, just want to present the reality of what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
May I approach it again?
No, we're, we're, we've had the proponents already, we, if you've got something you want to distribute, you can distribute that to the clerk.
Okay, so this, this was it?
We won't, we, we're not going to hear, we've already had the proponent's side.
Okay.
There's one more.
One more opponent? Opponent?
Yeah.
Okay.
My name is James Carter, thirty-five oh four, South Fifty-first Avenue. I'm a member of the G.I. Forum, no matter what anybody says. From what I'm gathering, I've been meetings, and I haven't received anything in the mail either from anybody on this side here, but it appears to me they're trying to use the council as a conduit to go around the legal ramifications of what we're trying to, you know, get done here. And we haven't had any claims against us as, as far as any negative police presence or any problems at the club. So the transfer of the liquor licenses is, to me, just not warranted. We haven't done anything to lose it. And to transfer arbitrarily, it seems, would set a bad precedent. I think, you know, this is something that's still going back and forth as far as legalities, and for them to more or less try to use you guys as, as a conduit to go do an end run, you might say, around that, I think is wrong. So, with that in mind, I, I thank you guys.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Can I get back up there?
Another opponent? Okay.
My husband and I have been lifetime members for fifty-five years.
Before you, before you continue, can I have your name and address for the record, please? That's all right.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Dolores Martinez, forty-five fourteen South Nineteenth Street.
Thank you, Dolores, go ahead.
My husband is sitting over here, he's a veteran from the Korean War, and he asked me to speak for him, and I'm speaking for myself also. But we have been members since Dr. Garcia, the founder of this organization, came in nineteen fifty-five. And his motto, Dr. Garcia's motto, was, "Education is our freedom, and freedom should be everybody's business." Every year, we have done this for a while, given scholarships to the kids, like Ms. Wattis said, she was one of them, my kids were, too, also, my grandkids. To the tune of twenty to thirty thousand a year. Now, some of these, we were the original, and we still are, I think, I have not received a letter yet, although I'm a lifetime member, we were the original members of the American G.I. Forum. Now I understand there's a group of gentlemen that are taking our name, stealing our identity that we've had since nineteen fifty-five, I don't understand this. As far as the veterans go, you ask many veterans here in Omaha, and they will tell you, and I invite all of you to go down to, to our building, they will tell you that they go down there for free dinners, luncheons, special luncheons that we have for the veterans. They, they feel very welcome there, they have been helped in, in many ways, they go down, ask for something, for help for something or other, and they know they can go to the G.I. Forum on N Street. Also, just recently, the past few years, we have given, all the members here, most of us are lifetime members, they have been able to negotiate with certain businesses that have given us, in our name, cars to two or three, I believe, lady veterans that had been in need with children, no, single mothers, veterans, and they have been awarded cars, new cars, brand-new cars. But we do a lot for the veterans, and I wish you could go down and see the building sometime, and all the work that has been put into it. I cannot tell you how many dozens of enchiladas I made when the building was being put up. I, I suspect that, is there maybe the money that, we're, we're a non-organiz, a nonprofit organization, so, and we have wonderful people helping us down there that are volunteers. We have, we have a retired captain fire, fireman, firefighter, that puts in a lot of time down there helping us with, keep the place going. Anyway, I just wanted to bring all this out, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, Mr. Garnett.
Thank you. Just keep in mind on item number twenty-six, we're here to either recommend or deny or take other action in regards to the appointment of Jose Ramos as manager of the American G.I. Forum at twenty zero two N Street, not to discuss the amount of tacos or enchiladas that are made, or anything along those lines. I would ask a question of our city clerk, Mr. Brown, the, is your office aware of the, or been contacted, or has there been contact made to, by the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, notifying the City of Omaha that there be a show cause hearing regarding this application?
Buster Brown, City Clerk, that is correct. There's, there will be a show cause, cause hearing coming up on the American G.I. Forum, either in July or August.
Okay, so it's going to be in the very near future that there'll be a show cause hearing regarding this application?
Correct.
So they have reason to believe that, let me ask this question, thank you, Mr. Brown, Mr. Mumgarth, when a show cause hearing, or could you explain why, what that process is when a show cause hearing is called for by the Liquor Control Commission? What's the background on that?
Well, the commission can call, can call for a show cause hearing at any time for pretty much any reason. They typically call, set up a show cause hearing when they see something that may be a violation of liquor laws, and they give the licensee an opportunity to come in and explain themselves, and explain why that's not a violation of liquor cause, basic laws. Basically, it's a show cause why discipline should not be imposed upon you. In this situation, they may have a question about whether somebody is operating the business that's not on the license. Now that brings to question of who's on the license. You're not, as you pointed out, you're not here to decide who should or shouldn't run the G.I. Forum, you're only here to decide whether the application for the manager was submitted by the licensee, because that's the only one that can submit a valid application, is the licensee. Now there are only, the officers and directors of the licensee are the only ones who can submit a valid application. The city clerk does have the Liquor Control Commission information on who those licensees are, or who those officers and directors are. We were unable to determine before the meeting today whether the application was submitted by one of those officers, the licensee. It appears at this point that it was not, and if that is the case, then it is not an application that has been properly submitted. And that might be why the commission has set up the show cause hearing.
Your name is?
My name is Tom, I'm mayor, deputy city attorney.
Thank you. So the, there is a possibility, based upon what you just described, that the application is of some suspect?
Yes. Yes, the, the people who have spoken in favor of it are not listed in the records of the license, of the Liquor Control Commission as officers or directors of the licensee. And so, and if so, they don't have the ability.
Make a motion, latest item over for ten weeks.
It's been moved and seconded, the latest item over for ten weeks, there are no further lights, roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Twenty-six is laid over ten weeks. Item number twenty-seven, Buffalo Wild Wings, number seventy-two at one hundred and forty-six fifteen West Maple Road.
Ten days.
Request permission to appoint Shawn Blizzard, manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-seven is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, my name is Shawn Blizzard, I am representing Buffalo Wild Wings at one four six one five West Maple Road, Suite one hundred. I am the operations general manager there. Do you guys need me to state my public address?
No.
Okay, I'm here to answer any questions you might have, and I thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents for item twenty-seven? Seeing none, are there any opponents for item twenty-seven? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Okay.
Blizzard. Blizzard.
Blizzard. Okay. There's been a motion, a second, roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Twenty-seven is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of city councilman calls an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken out by city councilme following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by city council rules order.
The public hearing, public hearings on agenda items number twenty-eight through thirty-two were held on June second, twenty fifteen. Been moved and seconded, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're going to remove item number forty-three, or forty-four from the consent agenda. Resolution.
Okay. Move thirty-four?
Forty-three, item number forty-three, the last.
Forty-three?
Forty-four.
Public hearings on agenda items number thirty-three through forty-three are today.
There we go.
If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda, agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name and address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Second.
Moved and seconded, before we begin, before we take the roll call, I, I would like to thank the gentlemen sitting back and here for introducing the Johnny Rogers name, it's very appropriate, and, and thank you for taking care of that. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Forty-four is withdrawn, seven to zero. Pursuant to city council rule seven eight, due to no meeting being held July seventh, agenda items number forty-five through forty-six should be laid over four weeks to July fourteen for publication of public hearing. Pursuant to city council rule seventy, the public hearing agenda items forty-seven through fifty-two shall be held on the third reading. Ordinance is on second reading, item fifty-three, ordinance authorizing acceptance of quote from J, from BJS Fleet's Wash for detailing vehicles for the Omaha Police Department.
Public hearing on agenda item fifty-three is today, proponents please. Seeing none, opponents please. Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Item fifty-four, ordinance to amend section twenty-three one seventy-seven concerning employment classifications by changing the pay range for the employment classification entitled Administrative Information Coordinator.
Public hearing on agenda item fifty-four is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Pursuant to city council rule seventy, the public hearing on agenda items number fifty-five through fifty-nine shall be held on the third reading. Pursuant to city council rule seven C, the public hearing agenda items sixty through sixty-four shall be held on the second reading.
Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We are adjourned at two forty-six.